All the City Council's Special Studies Session Meeting to Order for April 1st, 2014. Do we have the roll callings there?
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell. Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Mayor Proton Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hodderich.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington. Councilmember Teetz.
I expect Councilman Teetz here this evening, but Councilman Campbell and Councilman Pennington are out of the state, so I will move that Detroit City Council hereby excuses the absence of Councilman Campbell and Councilman Pennington at the City Council's Special Study Meeting of Tuesday, April 1st, 2014, due to being out of the state.
Support.
Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Fleming that we excuse the absences of Councilman Campbell, Councilman Pennington for being out of the state. Discussion? The vote, Mr. Benner?
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hodderich.
Yes.
Motion passes. This evening, we have a discussion item that will be handled by the City Manager, Brian Kishnik, and if I could, before you start, just commend you for putting together this focus group that's always important to the council to hear what the citizens of Troy have to say, and I know we make many of our decisions based on the input that we get from the citizens, so thank you for doing that. I know the answers sometimes seem obvious, but I think you always have to ask the question, no matter if you think you know the answer or not, so thank you for doing that and taking the initiative to do that, and I will turn the presentation over to City Manager Kishnik.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for coming out tonight for the results session, and before we get into the presentation and the format, I want to thank all the participants who came to the focus groups and city steward who sent all the notices out, but if you look at the picture that I've laid on the table and put on the wall, you can see the broad representation we did have from throughout the community, and what we try to do is identify some people, many people and groups that maybe we don't hear from on a regular basis and that have a stake in the Troy community and who are involved already, so we had parent-teacher organizations, teen advisory board, homeowners association representatives, the business community, and then a potpourri, citizens representatives, who many of them showed up tonight, and we appreciate that, but boards, chair people of our boards and commissions, PTO, homeowner rep, LFA board chair, not to mention pastor and people, so people from the religious community. So as we go through the results tonight, I'll give you this, I'll go through this presentation, but I want to highlight just a few things so that everybody has a good reference point, and that is, handout number one is the Troy story that you all have seen in a previous meeting, and what I did is with the focus groups, we went through this entire presentation with them to give them the foundation, to go through the takeaway exercise, which was determining the effective utilization of fund balance. That was the task at hand, that was the output, that was the tangible result, and that they worked through many breakout sessions, one breakout session, but in multiple groups. So I'm not going to go through this, but I want everyone to have it because that was the presentation that I made with the focus groups, and we did that with the city council as well that led up to focus groups presentation. So focus groups through 2014, as I said, the PTO organizations, the teen advisory board, the homeowner associations, different businesses, and then citizen representatives, and I wanted the pictures so you could see in the names underneath all the pictures, so you can see the people who took the time, and some of these sessions went two hours, they were scheduled for two hours. I know one group went three hours, so the night that my daughter came and sat through the three-hour presentation was very good as well. So what we did, here's the people we talked to, the focus groups, five of them, I went over the millage rate comparison, the fund balance of AAA-rated communities, the financial changes from 2008 to 2013, and then the scenario on effective fund balance utilization. So I want to, one slide that was in the, that is not this presentation, but the Troy story presentation, page 13, it's important that I go over real quickly so that it provides the context for tonight, and so that's not a slide here, but remember this table, this is the table that demonstrates in very factual numbers what happened to the city of Troy 2008 to 2013, and remember, I had nothing to do with this, I wasn't here, but this is the crash of '08 and how this city council, the city council and management addressed the $14 million reduction in expenditures so that revenues were still above expenditures, and the city was solvent and sustainable. And three things basically we need to remind ourselves happened. Employees throughout the city of Troy gave concessions, 10% concessions, whether through furlough days, wage reductions, health insurance, they gave reductions. The residents approved a millage levy to fund the library, which took those expenditures out of the general fund and established a dedicated millage to run the library. The voters approved that in the city of Troy, and then the rural retirement happened so that positions could be hired at lower levels than people going out, and then some positions consolidated and shared resources encouraged and utilized. So that's the three-legged stool as we understand it, where the city was able to create this scenario of surplus, revenues over expenditures. One other thing that happened, as you see on this table, you can recall, where the undesignedated fund balance goes from $12 million to $23 million, was a surplus in 2012, as well as assigned funds that were set aside for tax tribunal cases were no longer needed and came into the unassigned category of fund balance, so we went from $12 million to $23 million. So please, everyone needs to remember that context, and we talked about that generally, well, even specifically at the focus group, so that everyone understood what was going on in a much greater detail. So the results, what did people say? Before I said, what, you know, put them into their little groups, I said, what are, here are some of the things that we can brainstorm and think of you may want to consider, and the first is reconstructing high road, traffic roads, and I have to give a cost because this is a real bunged exercise with financial consequences for their decisions in the groups. So reconstructing high-traffic roads, this is the $10 million plan that would cost the city $5 million one time. Increased strategic road plowing, that's per event if, to go into the subdivisions, if we budget for six times and you want us to come 10 times, that's about $500,000 more or $120,000 per occurrence. Fire Station 4, we talked about, being about $3.5 million one-time cost due to its inefficiencies. Reinstating the traffic safety unit, one sergeant and three officers, $500,000 annually in the police department. Funding the employee retirement system 100%, retiree healthcare, volunteer fire incentive program, here are the costs to do that, to bring it to 100% funding today for all future, for the bodies that are there today through the mortuary tables. Make up for personal property tax loss, I asked the participants to, try to be us, and if the state of Michigan's going to eliminate personal property taxes, you know, that's great for business according to some, but there's a financial impact for us annually, and should we take that into consideration, or should we just trust the state of Michigan to reimburse the locals? Because nobody knows, although there's a little more late-breaking news today, as Mark Miller submitted in an email, that reimbursement looks like it's going to happen, but when we were going through this, we did not know that, and you have to account for that in any other state unfunded mandate or reduction in taxes or revenues to the general fund. And then we wanted to give them the opportunity to, if our rate of our general fund rate is 6.5 mils, if they wanted to lower it a mil, it would cost $4.3 million a year, or even half mil or a quarter of a mil, here's the amount per year it would cost us, and so you need to account for that, if that's what people wanted to do. And then there's many other things, library tech upgrades, all the way down to charitable giving, Troy Days, trail improvements, dog park, recreational programming, removing the library millage, 0.7 mils would be about $3 million. So we tried to give a basket of options for consideration, but I also said, nothing is off limits, just because I submit this for your consideration, anything you can think of, and by the way, one of the things that wasn't on my list originally that came up, I think it was the parent-teacher organizations, would you agree, or teen advisory board, I think the first one, parent-teacher, the library tech upgrades became a real desirable function and cost that we added to this, but nothing was off limits, and you'll see some of the unique things that people came up with. So this is what it looked like, we gave them budgeted revenues and budgeted expenditures so that our beginning unassigned fund balance starts right here, and they had to do a three-year, a three-year description and cost identification for utilizing fund balance, and then at the bottom, it would show whether any fund balance would be and what percentage of expenditures, because remember, percentage of expenditures is how we kind of, you know, gauge whether we're, we have enough or not, in addition to a straight dollar amount, and that's how we were able to compare people, and in the first presentation, we did that, did that comparison. So some groups did not trust our budgeted revenues and our budget expenditures, they challenged us, challenged me, and I passed it along to Tom and Mark and the whole management team, they challenged us on some of that, and we worked through it, and it was very helpful, but basically, the idea was, how do you utilize fund balance? That doesn't mean how you spend fund balance, that means how do you utilize fund balance, which is very different from spending, which some people, when they consider this as a Christmas list, a wish list, and it's not that, it's how do you effectively utilize fund balance? That could be, in the words of our chairman of the pension board, Mark, keep all of it. I think that's where Mark started, and we'll get to him in the end, but Mark did not end up there in the end because Mark had to work with other members of his team, and he realized that there were some divergent opinions and interests, and so overall, a compromise was had, which really, in my opinion, is exactly the way the real world's working out here. So scenario one, the PTO, any questions to that point? Yeah, any questions to that?
Brian, was there any discussion before this all started about what a good figure would be for a fund balance, 20%, 30%, some of the things that we heard from?
Bobby Vincinsky. So I never gave them that answer, right? There were some things in here I want to, you know, were meant to have some discovery, right? However, every single time before it was time to break up into the groups, that question was asked, and so there was explanation that, you know, our bond underwriter was, financial advisor, sorry, was saying that 20 to 30% is a good number. Some people subscribe to that, and the high end, some on the low end, many in the middle. As you can see from the board, the pictures up there, because we show the percentage, we'll go through it here rather quickly, but it came up every single time. Anything to add to that, folks? So PTO, scenario one, and there were two groups in, out of the PTO, they wanted, number one was to increase the street repair program over two years, $6.2 million, okay? So that doesn't match up to the 5.1, we were using different numbers back then, remember, over the course of this, from February 26th to March 25th, numbers changed, and the point is that was fully funding the $10 million project. Rebuilding Fire Station 4 was very important, reinstating the traffic safety unit was equally important, a technology wing, staffing and improvement at the library was important, that's a reinstatement of some positions, funding to Troy Youth Assistant, Boys and Girls Club, and Troy?
Community Coalition.
Community Coalition is the one, yeah, Troy Community Coalition at $100,000, so there was, and I did not have that on my list, by the way, at this point, to even make consideration of that, but people in the parent-teacher organizations understand it. Recreation programs were important, Troy Days, Nature Center, so they ended up at about 19.8, so 20% in fund balance, or 10, $11 million is where this group ended up. Scenario two was a separate group of the PTO, streets, they actually put more money into streets every year, additional $500,000, fire station, police, they, and this was not on there either, animal control, this is a bit of a unique one that they said was important, fire inspector, Jamfast, and they wanted to recognize a one-time payment to employees, and they came down to 20% or $11 million at the end. So the PTO is basically fix roads, hire police, rebuild Fire Station 4, and about 20% both in their fund balance remaining, as they're summary. We now the teens, and I'll just go through a few of the teens because there were six, it's a very big group, very energetic, and if you wanted to participate with that group, you had to be highly functioning, because they're high energy and they're very intelligent and they're a lot of fun, they're very creative, and I was, I'm really glad we got the opportunity to work with them, and as you know, I think we should find more opportunities to work with that teen advisory board, they're very, very good people, and, but get a good night's sleep, they're smart, they're sharp. Reconstruct high-traffic roads was very important, and some of these groups, especially around Troy High, because it's very difficult to get into Troy High in the morning when there's, when all the traffic's around there. Fire Station 4, the police unit, charitable giving was important, some bike rental centers they were interested in, and then Jamfast and Troy Days, and you can see they ended up a little more, 25% at the end. This one was a lot more of the same, they ended up at 10% in the end, so they were willing to, this group went as little more, library tech upgrades, charitable giving, rec programs, I mean, the dog park, nature center.
Ben.
They were, they were ready to go. Again, roads, employee, this is interesting, this group of teams would think that the employee retirement system, funding that at $9 million was important, that's their number two, you know, basically after rebuilding roads, now they only ended up at 18%, so not bad, so they thought the unfunded liability piece was kind of important, but teen space was as well, and so, and snowplow, road, snowplowing was key. Pretty fun. Roads, expanding the library and adding a teen section, as you might imagine, from this group, and library tech upgrades, as well as charitable giving, new books for TPL for the library, and they ended up at 16%, so a little lower. Roads, library renovations, again, expanding the aquatic center, renovating the nature center, so the city parks improvement, so quality of life here in bricks and mortar from this group, ending up at 6%. This was scenario six, reconstructing the roads at $5 million and remodel, expand the library at $8 million, so you could see they ended up at 20%, but they were pretty, very sharply focused on what they wanted to see. They didn't want to talk about a lot of things, it's pretty simple. Do your roads and redo the library. So basically, fix roads, upgrade the library, and they had police in there a lot, and you can see their percentage of expenditures at, all the way from, you know, 5%, I guess, to 25%. Next group was the homeowners association, a very good group, serving a dual purpose this night of this focus group, not just to do this, which is, did this group go three hours, or was it somebody else? Yeah, I think this group went three hours, very, very strong group, and this will be, this was the catalyst to get that group going again so that they meet on a regular basis, in fact, they went around the table and had some conversation about sharing bylaws and insurance requirements, and I know that I think-
They have a meeting day.
A meeting, yeah, a meeting set up at the community center as a result, to just talk about homeowners association stuff, so.
Oh, God, he wants to go on the mobile?
So these, this group went to a negative five. I can even tell you what group this was, who was the leader of this group, but they said, really, you need to, you need to take care of these things, find a way, not just high-traffic roads, but city and subdivision roads, you need to take care of. Library millage, remove it and balance the retiree healthcare, but get to work, and they said, we know you'll work on your revenues so that you could accomplish this, that's why they left it at that. So go to work on your revenues, and, because these are needs, not wants, okay? This group ended up at 21%, if you will, roads, Fire Station 4, traffic safety, trail improvements was important, library technology upgrades for group two. Group three, roads, leverage county funds, they didn't have like a revenues and expenditures, revenues being less than expenditures, so they accounted for that deficit there, and so that was the mathematicians in the room. Public, police and safety, school and others, not all traffic though, there was a desire to not just fund traffic police because they didn't want to fund the positions that could ultimately give them a ticket. They also said to fund the personal property tax loss, which I showed was about $180,000 a year, and they ended up at 25% in fund balance. They wanted to pursue some shared services, risk management and fire tech, which in terms of risk management, we do that now. So here's, the homeowners association was fixing the roads, hiring police, and they did have a focus on a historic village and the nature center, between about 20 and 25% in fund balance, when you take out the negative five, which said, figure out your revenues, but these are needs. The business reps met, and we met up here and had a great conversation about where our focus should really be in the city, and streets was obviously number one, snow plowing was also important, traffic safety, recreation and school, and they ended up at 32, 33% remaining in fund balance. They recommend taxes stay the same, keeping ending unassigned percent of expenditures above 300, 30% for our AAA bond rating, rebuilding the fire station through a millage and funds for county road if the county works with us and potentially having the city take over maintaining these roads. So there was a lot of commentary.
So they were proposing a millage both for the fire, I'm, excuse me, is it?
Just for the fire station.
And not for the county roads, but they're just hoping the county roads will, were they looking at a separate millage for subsuming the county roads?
No, but they want, they'll allocate funds for the county roads if the county works on us. We're, not on us, we're with us.
With us, gotcha.
Yeah, because we work together. Is, we work together. Scenario two, five point one million, but they said, hey, you gotta, you know, talk about Maple Road too, it's, don't neglect Maple, the Maple Road corridor, which, you know, our, our retreat and bus tour Mark and his team demonstrated how we are really focusing on Maple Road corridor in the master plan process. Future, very, very, future city technology planning, a million dollars, data-driven intelligent traffic light controls, two hundred and fifty thousand. They think we should fund the nonprofits and add to the quality of life, whether it's the nature center, the historical village, the Troy Youth Assistance, Troy Community Coalition, Boys and Girls Club, but consider a challenge grant. So if we give them twenty-five thousand, you know, they need to raise twelve thousand five hundred, right, or if we give them fifty thousand, they need to raise twenty-five thousand, you know, whatever, but consider a challenge grant. Us, oops, I'm sorry. Very smart crosswalks, six of them at seventy-five thousand dollars each. This is the discussion on Big Beaver, getting north to south, south to north, in a very pedestrian, safe way, and doing that with smart crosswalks. So you can see, this group was very interested in technology, and enhancing the city through technology and pilot programs, so that street lights change when there's no traffic there. So, pretty much what, what you see throughout the city, as long as they're functioning correctly. But if there's traffic down at this end, that's really backing up and that light goes, the lights are coordinated. So I think it's just an education piece, and a revamping of some of those controls so that they work correctly and are in working order. Their fund balance was at twenty, twenty-seven percent. They put, people would ju, sometimes put notes here, these are not my notes, and recommending taxes stay the same, because I would let them know, whether you, you know, reducing taxes or the library millage, you know, that's part of the equation here, so we want to, we want to make sure that's talked about. Scenario three, the business people, reconstructing the roads at five million dollars. A redevelopment and capital improvement, five point six million dollars, and branding the city of Troy, two hundred and fifty thousand. They ended up at twenty-three point, twenty-four percent. So what they wanted to do was really invest in economic development, right? The, or, or in the words of Doug Smith, business development. Not, not, and brand the city of Troy, and utilize the funds to do that. So the summary was to fix the roads, technology infrastructure and, and police were very important, with that group. Citizens representatives, does this look familiar to anybody? Nope, nope. Who was it, is it yours? Come on up, I'll let you do it. I said if there was somebody here from the group that we'd ask them to present it, right?
Tell me that. Do I need to stand here to do this?
I think so.
Sure, or, or you can sit. Right there, sir.
No, I'll, I'll stand here like a regular person. The roads, the roads first and foremost. And, and we started where we wanted to end. At the thirty percent fund balance. So that's where we started. We got consensus on that, and we moved from there, and then the most pressing problem we felt was the roads, so get them fixed. Restore traffic safety, because safety is important, and that also can generate a little revenue, to be perfectly honest. And we had no problem hiring police officers to give us tickets. Fire technician, again, it's a safety thing, as is the school snow plowing. And then we got to, okay, but Troy was built on quality of life, so we have to add a little something in there. And we hoped it would be more, but we figured that those were the two things that blanketed the city. Recreation programs and the community safety net, done through the coalition and youth assistance and the Boys and Girls Club, so that's how that came about.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Scenario two, does this look like yours, sir?
Um, no.
Okay. Does that look like yours?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do this one first, I'll do this, and then we'll call you, or...
Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Like you said, I wanted to start a hundred percent.
Hundred percent?
But we had to negotiate. Roads were very important, a lot of complaints about eighteen-mile road. Disaster, I guess, is kind of the word that was attributed to that. So they wanted to see that improved upon immediately, wanted to reinstate the charitable Remove the library millage. Basically, there were two years left on the millage. Feeling was, the citizens went and voted for this in a time of need. Need may not be as strong now as it was. Let the citizens know that you appreciate the fact that they voted this extra money out of their pocket during this time of need. We'll give it back to you, realizing that a couple of years from now, we may have to go back to the citizens, but as much as the citizens put trust in the city, the city should acknowledge that, and now, again, since we have a little bit of extra money, remove that. It was important to reinstate the safety unit. Good or bad, tickets did not come up, but we assumed everybody would know our name, so if we did get stopped, we wouldn't get a ticket. So the ending unassigned expenditures were far less than what I would have liked to have seen, but as Brian said, the word compromise came into play very much, and that's what we came up with.
Excellent. Thank you, Mark. Very good. And the last scenario of the representatives, you want to go up to the microphone and we
One of the things that was, was not a hot topic, but a topic that we thought should be not lost, and that's the AAA bonding. We should keep that. I think that's a wonderful thing for the city of Troy to have. The roads, while we, I didn't agree with the eight million, maybe seven, but I live off an eighteen-mile road, so that's very significant for me. The volunteer fire program, yes. We thought that, that was the one with about the fire station, wasn't it? That we thought that, we split that in two. It was, I think originally it was seventy or, or seven million, I think, and we split that in two. We thought we could, we could do that. Animal control reinstated, yes. I live in Northfield Hills, and we did have a problem last year with coyotes, and we also have deer over there, so that is a concern. The youth teen program, yes, we enjoyed that, thought that was a very good thing to have. And the one thing that we really started off with was, don't let's spend the whole twenty-four million. Let's put some away for a rainy day, which is, I think we came up with about thirty percent, if I'm not mistaken. So we thought that was a, a very good thing to do. You never know, could be some Easter baskets, so if we've got a couple of dollars stashed away, then we can fix that. So that was about the, but the roads were the number one program.
Thank you. So in summary, they were from sixteen to thirty percent, but with a high, with, with a moderate degree of percentage of expenditures and fund balance at twenty to, you know, twenty percent, twenty to twenty-four percent as an average, right? So nine to sixteen million dollars out there, but theme or charitable giving, hiring police and fixing the roads. So there were also some unique fund balance investment opportunities that I just wanted to highlight quickly, that I thought came across, smart city stuff, fire optic network, the use of technology throughout the community was talked about at all levels, whether it was not just in the library, but out of the road system, all throughout. Challenge grants and nonprofit funding came up, and that was something we didn't anticipate, and we didn't put out there for consideration, and was talked about. And then communication branding Troy came up as a pretty significant measure, especially with the business community, that we didn't anticipate. So very, very helpful discussion at all levels, and I think when everybody, when, when everyone walked in the meeting, they would say, you know, this is like the mystery meeting, we don't know exactly why we're here, and when they left, they were, you know, if we, if, when we did finally leave, they were ecstatic and, and had a great time, and, and, you know, Mark probably put the, put the email the best by his discussion, which is, I have a better flavor, better feel for what you're, what you have to do and, and the pressures. So I thought that was well said, and well representative of all the participants when he sent that email, and I think I forwarded it on to the council, and I, I think it was very, very apropos. So that's, that is the presentation, and that is the focus group. I wanted to, I wanted to accomplish a couple of things. I wanted to, this was part, as I told the group, this was part of our civic engagement. You know, my second year here on the job is to engage the public in a very meaningful way with a tangible output, and then show that up on the wall after this presentation's over. It's still on the wall, and everybody can, can get a flavor, so we know collectively the input, and this council ultimately gives us direction on where to go.
Thank you. Just to, maybe just start things off, I don't think I'm surprised to hear the roads because of the winter that, that we've had. Had we not had this type of winter, and had, I'm not sure if that would have been number one, but I think that the obvious winter brought forward something quicker than it might have happened, might have taken another year. I guess I'm a little surprised that the citizens would feel that it's our obligation to fix county roads, which surprises me a little bit, and I, I would assume that that was communicated during the discussion, that basically Long Lake is not a city street, and that's not a city road that, that we're supposed to maintain, along with most of the roads in Troy. As we know, the bad ones belong to the county, the good ones belong to the city, is kind of the way that I tell people. So I guess I'm a little surprised that they would be okay with expending five, five to six to eight million dollars out of our fund to, to do roads, the county roads.
And it's a great point, and it came up in every group, right? Every single scenario, and maybe at the beginning, there was a person or two who had some reluctance to spending money on the county roads, but, but ninety-nine point nine percent of the participants would tell you, it does, I don't know if I'm driving on a county road or a city road, or a, you know, the only difference I know is I-75, and the rest just look like roads. And, and it's costing me money to have a flat tire, to swerve out of the way of a pothole, to have resources dedicated from the police department closing road, you know, that, the return is so great. We need to fix the roads, regardless of who owns them, because jurisdiction, you know, you don't, you don't know the jurisdictional issues if you're not involved like we are. And so that came up every time.
The format that we have this evening is not to interact with the audience, so there will be an opportunity for public comment. After we have a discussion, we would welcome your comments at the microphone then. You know, I, I know Robin Beltrame is here this evening, and thanks for giving the presentation. And, you know, Robin and I, in council, and Councilman Fleming, two or three years ago, we, we had, we had heartburn giving money for county roads, and I don't think three years ago, we would sit here today and say that we think that that's a good thing to do, but I have to tell you today, my opinion is different than it was three years ago, and sometimes, you know, you have to do, do some things that you don't really want to do, and I think today I would say that we need to fix these roads. The county's not going to fix them, the state's not going to fix them, so that leaves it to us. If we can get fifty cents on a dollar, as is proposed, you know, I think that's the best deal we're going to get today, and I've discussed this with, with Brian many times. I just don't want Troy to get penalized for being proactive. That, that's my main concern, and I, I've expressed that, but my opinion has changed in the past two years.
Mayor, I forgot to say one thing, because that's a, that was a key point, and I think that was, you know, in the slide presentation, as you see that I, I gave out to the focus group participants, we show how for ten million dollars, and this was, this was when the numbers were a little different, but now it's ten million dollar project worth of road improvements would cost the city five million dollars. You know, that's the kind of leveraging and partnerships we've been working on, and Bill Lutery and Steve Van Detten, and, and many others, by the way, trying to show that, you know, we're willing to put something up to make the roads better, but there has to be a contribution, there has to be a sharing, there has to be a partnership and a leveraging, and that's why it begins to make sense also. I'd be glad to say that.
Commissioner Fleming?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I think this is something this, this council can a hundred percent agree on. Every citizen I talk to today is concerned about the roads. And Brian, you and I have had the discussion too, I think these matching grants and so forth, absolutely, we have to take advantage of it. And I agree, you're in Troy, you're on Troy roads, citizens really don't care. If they understand it's county, they, but one thing I keep hearing from citizen as well, why aren't the roads, we repair roads, but they deteriorate too quick. Can we do a better job? Is slab replacement really the answer? Because we, we seem to go about spending money, John Arsh, an example, and we, we fix the slabs that are deteriorating, but in the process, it's almost like with the heavy equipment we're moving and going through, we're destroying and doing damage with the loads on, on the slabs that were supposedly good. Now, two years later, they're bad, so it seems we're constantly having to go back and do patchwork. And I don't know the answer. One may be that we have to look at the big picture, and how do we reduce the, the weight limits on these vehicles? How do we get the state to reduce the weight limits? We're doing it to ourselves. I mean, we're destroying the roads with the, with the weights, you know, that we're, we're lying, we're lying on them. And I know Troy's probably more proactive in the police department. I know I've heard things in the past week, really cracking down on heavy trucks coming in, you know, when the Frost laws are on, and we need to do that. But we have to spend money on the roads, but we have to, I think, look at the processes we're using and see how we can have the roads last longer, if it's using better materials, better foundations, reducing the weights, or a combination thereof. But certainly, I'm not a bit surprised that every focus group had a major emphasis on the roads, because that's, that's what we're hearing. One thing I, I didn't hear, and I think probably because we're just not educated, and it wasn't on the list, and I don't know how this is all going to play out, but another concern that I have as a citizen is what's going to happen with our water infrastructure, and is that somehow going to get into our pockets down the road too? Should we be setting us out some fund balance for that? But this DWSD is not just a county problem, it's, it's going to be a city problem. Our water is going to become a significant issue, where we get it from, how we maintain the infrastructure and so forth. I'm concerned that our water rates could double, and we still have infrastructure problems, but that wasn't even brought up. And you and I have had that discussion, we've had some meetings on that, but that's concern that we, we don't even have on the table now, because I think it's too early to tell, but I do have some real, the roads and beyond roads, I think our, our water and system and infrastructure is something we're going to have to be thinking about and planning for in the future as well, when considering how much fund balance we need.
Excellent points. I, I share the frustration with fixing slabs that, you know, meet a certain criteria, and leaving slabs right next to them that are going to deteriorate the next year, and then you're, you're going down John Arsh dodging slabs, you know, and Long Lake, you're going down Long Lake, it, it's got to the point where you're not dodging slabs anymore, you're, you're dodging everything. And... And, you know, it's just, it's just that old way of doing business that the, the state and the county, you know, let's put a Band-Aid on a problem and let's kick the can down the road. We need to do what Troy's doing and that's attack the problem, not put a, put a Band-Aid on, on a gaping wound. And, you know, I share the frustration, I think every citizen does, that you go and you throw good money into bad, a bad road by just doing little. But what I'm hearing from Bill Houdery and Steve Van Detten and from, from Brian is that we're going to change that philosophy with this ten million dollars.
This is going to be more of segment replacement rather than slab replacements?
Yes.
And you can see that on Big V right now going west.
You know, I don't think there's any council member that's going to, okay, continue to do what we're doing today by throwing ten million dollars at, at good money into a bad situation. And I'm encouraged by hearing that we're going to change the way that we're going to, we're going to attack the roads. Tomorrow, you know, I, I'm going to be asked to sign a, you know, what I consider the, the Michigan flower, which is a orange barrel tomorrow to, to, to promise that we'll fix potholes within forty-eight hours. I'm more than happy to do that, but once again, that's not fixing the problem. You know, I, I commend Channel Seven for at least bringing it forward, but putting a, putting a hunk of tar on a hole that's going to last a week is, is not going to solve our problems, you know? So, I'm encouraged, I like the ten, you know, I like the way that the staff has really aggressively gone after the money. Other cities are not doing that, in my opinion. We're going to have to bite the bullet, I think, and throw some of our own money to solve the problems so at least our residents don't have to blow a tire out on Long Lake or John R or whatever. But, Councilwoman?
I, I agree with you both. And I think the bigger issue is the state level prioritizing this. This is a statewide issue. The governor, a year ago, asked for a plan to come up with billions, billions of dollars for roads. And the legislature hasn't come through yet. It's, again, this year, now there's some millions that are being allocated and, and that's fine. But I, I do think it's important for our residents to understand that we're stepping up to meet a need because we can't wait for that any longer. And we recognize that to keep our city strong. In the meantime, you know, we need, we need at the state level, we need some real answers, some real roadwork to come through so that, you know, I think here we are in a situation where we can aggressively go after it and I'm, we're blessed with the city staff that did very creatively. What about communities that aren't in a position to be allocating funds? And those are right next door to us and those are our tires that are going to take a hit. We all drive outside of Troy. So, anything we can be doing to encourage our, our state reps, and I know, I believe you've met with them and they know that this is an issue and a priority and for sure, I share your concern. I don't want to be penalized a year or two down the road when they do come through with money because we spent money upfront now to try to help the situation. Having said that, I'm all about the roads. Nobody, nobody I've talked to, when I try to explain it's a county road and the, and the amount of money it will take, they literally look at you and say, I don't care, fix them. So, you know, this is, that is outstanding work. It was interesting for me to see the, the safety piece on the traffic control unit. And I don't know if it came up at all in the discussions, if people recognized the deterrent factor of traffic units on the roads in terms of detering crime. I just think that's one of those quality of life things that we just have to keep aggressively going after. And I think it's interesting that there was support there in some of the discussions at least. Did people talk about that?
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, to, to, to address that, I think, I think everyone who put that on their, in their group was interested in more of a police presence in the community.
Okay.
You know, whether it's traffic safety, you know, that's more of a technical, I'm not so sure, we didn't get into what exactly that meant, but more police out in the community is what the focus groups participants were interested in. And everyone saw the value. There was discussion that we are the safest city, so do we really need more police? And, you know, the, the answer was if, if we can put more police in, in the community, it's a good thing. At, while balancing priorities.
Right, right.
Is the issue.
Councilman Henderson?
Sure. I just want to thank Brian for putting this all together because this will, I, I know a tremendous amount of work. And I tried to attend a few of them just to kind of see who was attending. And it was a completely new set of faces that, that attended these. So it was, it was a nice job trying to coordinate the effort, I'm sure. And again, you know, just to echo everybody else's sentiment on the roads, you know, I don't think anybody's going to disagree with us spending some money. And again, I applaud the departments for putting the funding together so that we can do an effective job. Ten million dollars is a good chunk. And, and also the mayor for signing on to the.
Well, I, I haven't a plan to do that tomorrow.
Well, good for you, it's all PR, it's all hype. But, you know, I think maybe Brian can address, you know, how long does it take us right now if somebody calls and said we have a monster pothole?
You know, we're, we're right out there.
Yeah, so we already subscribe to that.
Yeah, and I think that's important to recognize that we have a policy in place. It's twenty-four hours, no longer than seventy-two hours. Of course, we're going to change that to forty-eight, but we've always done that. And we can give examples, I know Brian can give examples of the police department going out to a pothole, the county showing up with not enough tire and not enough people. And we ended up having to call the VPW and have them come out and do the job right. So, whether the county comes out or not, Troy's going to always do it right. And we have examples of that already this year. But, you know, I have, you know, Councilman Fleming, I, I agree a hundred percent that you, you have to be careful. Like, you know, it's easy to tell people that, you know, you, you have this, this amount of money, tell me what you would do with it. I kind of would, would have liked to see what they would have done if you would have said, you have, you have to keep it at twenty-five percent, okay? And then I'd like, you know, to see some, some priorities because quite, quite honestly, I think that's what I'm going to go into this because, you know, we're not over the hump yet by any means. And I think it would be irresponsible for the council to, to just say, okay, we got this, this pile of money, let's just go spend it. And, you know, I'm going to kind of look at it like you got about thirty percent. And let's, let's, you know, let's look at what, where are the, the top two or three priorities that we need to do, at least with our, with our three-year budget. And I do look at the top three that I got out of, I, I did cheat and I looked forward to the management scenario.
I did too.
I will confess that I just cheated and I just, I just looked. But Councilman Fleming, did you have something else that you?
Yes, Mayor, I, I think we're all in agreement. But one thing we do need to say, while we're fixing county roads, let's don't let the county off the hook. We need to keep the pressure on this county. We're fixing your roads, we won't pay back. We need payback. And of course, they're not getting from the state, but we all know that Troy is a donor city to the county and to the state. All we're asking for is give us our fair share back. And what we have to do is look, know exactly what we're giving to the county and taxes and to the state and hold our legislators and people's feet to the fire to get that money back in this district, these districts where we are. Because otherwise, if we keep fixing and don't hold them accountable or go after, they'll let us. And some other city will get the money that rightfully belongs to Troy.
Well said. Yeah, but I, I think Brian could probably tell you that the county is willing to step up with some help, not, not the financial help that we're looking for, but engineering and maybe if you want to speak to the.
Well, just like you're saying, as we, you know, the, this, I, I'm convinced that this county is doing everything they can right now by doing the design work, doing the construction administration and then helping leverage, whether it's tri-party monies, whether it's the, the risk reserved monies that are coming through and bringing them to Troy because Troy is willing to do roads and has always been willing to do roads. And I'm hearing other managers talking throughout this, not just this county, but other places that they are stepping up and doing county roads because otherwise it, it'll just continue to be a maintenance Band-Aid approach that, that is not sustainable and not an acceptable level of service. So, you know, and, and our engineering department, Steve and Bill, do a great job of working with the county. So anytime there's an opportunity, I'm convinced they're coming to work with the city of Troy. And that will continue. Now, having said that, your state legislatures and state senator, they need to get to work on road funding.
Yes.
As Councilman, Councilwoman Hoderick said, they need to go to work, not on a hundred million dollars that gets funneled through the road. By the way, it helped a lot.
It helps.
It was, it was good for this winter. And then a hundred and fifteen million where there's, you know, really debating whether, what projects are going to get funded. But they need, that's still not fixing the road funding problem that everyone knows is the issue in Michigan. And that's what needs to happen. It's, it's a state of Michigan issue. And we just do the best because guess what? We're the street level, you know, workers. We're here at the, at the ground level in the trenches.
Councilman?
If you could pass on, you know, in the course of conversations through, you know, through Bill Houdery and Steve Van Detten, to the county, the appreciation that we have for the valuable relationship, for pushing up shirt sleeves and just, you know, coming up with a plan that not only we could sink our teeth into, but obviously the focus group personnel did and understood what was going on. That's, that's excellence. And I, you know, I think we're all beyond appreciative and they don't, we'll almost forget to say so. So, that's good stuff because that is what everybody's talking to us about.
Any other discussion? I just kind of look, you know, just, what really tipped me to, to kind of say this is somewhat our responsibility now is if you look at it in the same context as public safety, there are communities around us and not too far from us that do, are not as safe as Troy is, you know? So we do have an obligation, I think, to our community, whether it's road, public safety or whatever, is to make it the best. And just like public safety, it's always, as you see, you know, if we can give back in public safety, we give back in public safety because we want to be, we don't want to be like some of the other communities. So we don't want our roads to be like some of the other communities either. So, that's kind of the analogy that I use to, to maybe kind of put me over the top on this issue when two years ago, I would, I would have never given a dime to a county road.
I can appreciate that.
So, Brian, did you want to summarize with the management's?
Not really, I, I can, but it's basically everything you just said. You know, we try to use, and this issue came up a lot, whether, you know, creating ongoing expenditures using fund balance is not a good practice, which is why when we've been going over the budget that we haven't presented yet, but will be April twenty-one and twenty-three, I believe, you know, we looked at some additional police officers, two officers and a, a public safety aide to do some crash reduction focusing and be visible out in the community in the operating budget. And then, and then the five million for the roads and the fire station as uses for fund balance leaves us at about twenty-eight percent. So there's still some room there if your number's twenty-five percent. But, you know, being staff, we, we always want to be conservative and that's what, that's what keeps us going.
Okay. We will move to public comment if there is anyone in the audience that wishes to speak this evening. If you would come to the microphone and if you could just give us about three minutes. Yes, please. And please state your name.
John Valentine. I'm on the board of directors at Northfield Hills Condominium Association and a C O P. Thank you, Chief. Two things. City manager brought up the fact that when we first got into this thing, we didn't know that the county, you know, was giving us money for the county roads or some services that were worth money. So that, that was a, a, a thing that everybody said, wow, that's really good. And, and I think the number, if I'm not mistaken, was sixty, forty. We did sixty percent, they did forty percent. Is that about right? Okay. And one, the second thing is an observation. I have an engineering degree and I watch the people fixing the roads because I come along eighteen mile road all the, and it's already cost me money, by the way, I blew a tire. I see the guys get the truck, get a shovel, shovel with the blacktop in the hole and pat it down and then walk away to the next hole. I would like to suggest that the city buys what I call an elephant's foot, which is like on a pole and it's a thing about this diameter, it's steel. And they get this thing, they put the blacktop in there and they pound it down into the hole because when they just put it in the hole and pat it down with a shovel, which they do, I think about three or four cars go over that and the hole's half empty again. So I would just like to make that suggestion. Thank you.
My name is Mark Kalise. Few comments. One on the roads, not only do people blow tires, but I have a few friends that have actually ruined their rims and with some of these fancy vehicle, well, I guess standard vehicle now, no longer are they strictly metal, they're the fabricated stuff and you're topping another five or six hundred dollars plus the tire. So that, to me, adds a little more importance to filling these potholes and having decent streets. Secondly, the fund balance, we're, we're coming, currently we have a fifty-one percent fund balance. And we were compared to Bloomfield Township, which was a special situation, but they're a hundred and seven percent, Birmingham sixty-three percent, Bloomfield Hills is only twenty-three. I'd rather not see us go down to Bloomfield Hills, twenty-three percent more, shoot for sixty percent, fifty to sixty percent. Because as much as these things have improved in the last few years, many of us hopefully have a longer memory and remember how fast this thing fell. No fault of Troy, no fault of Michigan residents, the economy hurt and we could someday see that come again. And sitting with a fifty percent plus fund balance, as much as our group didn't come up with that figure, I think that that is something that I personally would like to see and it would be good for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Thank you. Any response? Just once again, good job, Brian, to, you and your staff, this is always educational for, for us. As I said, it's good to get the input from the residents.
In wrapping up, it was said that, I can't remember who said it, but all the coordination is done by Cindy Stewart, I just show up and facilitate. So that's, that's really how it works.
I can attest to that, happens to me quite a bit.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Anything else? Councilman Fleming?
Just one thing for city manager discussing. I mentioned the Detroit Water Sewer Department. Do you have any concern about that, that that's going to be funding that we haven't even put on the radar yet?
It's, yeah, so the, the Detroit Water Sewers issue is definitely on the radar screen for us in the city of Troy. And, and as we've had conversations, it's a very, very difficult and serious issue that we need to be very, very in tune with and our people are in Tom's, but a part of that. But here, here's the one thing I would tell you at this point, we dealt with general fund fund balance here. And I would never, I, I, never is a long time, a strong word, but I would not see myself recommending using any general fund, fund balance, but certainly the water fund and bonding through whatever means you would have to do. And remember, this is a low debt city. You know, I almost call it a no debt city. And so that would be the funding mechanism, whatever the consortium, if, if it comes together, were to work out, would, would not. were to work out, would not affect this particular discussion. But it is going to be one of the biggest issues in Oakland County, if not already.
Just a couple of housecleaning issues. I will touch base with Councilman Teetz. I know he has had a sick member of his family, so if we're going to excuse him, we can do that either tomorrow night or at the council meeting on Monday. Okay?
Yes.
Brian, is this going to be available on the website? Is there going to be something that we can...
We'll have both presentations available on the website, for sure.
For sure.
And then some form of this, this is a big document, but, yeah.
Well, just a picture or something.
Yeah, we'll make all three available.
All three, okay.
That's awesome, because the more we educate, we hear, having people come up and talk to me about our bond rating and fund balance, that was not a conversation the average person had in Kroger just two or three years ago. And that, the more we educate the community, the more we come together to be smart, to be a really smart municipality. So, yeah, if you can put that out there, really appreciative of the increased understanding that's coming just from this dialogue, and thank you for taking extra time to do it.
Thanks. We are adjourned.